The bulk of the borrowing is a decision that we still have some details to work out, but that at least.
Gets it going. They've got to, they've got, they've got to do the A and E to fine tune the number so we know how much ultimately there is gonna need.
And then Tommy, what did you say about when we would need to know and answer on the rest?
On the, we would need, if we do a bond, if they do a bond issue in that April, May, that's when you need to have your dollars because that flows into the bond and how much that.
Yeah.
Because there's multiple ratios that the county maintains on their credit rates, not just schools.
Sure.
And so that's the other thing, they've got to work and make sure everything fits inside those.
Yep.
Uh, different matrices that they've got to work on.
But we, we, last Tuesday night, Davenport gave us a very favorable report and we can, we can, we can make some things work. It may require a little structural decisions, but we can make it work. It's up to the board to determine ultimately what the, what the borrowing capacity you're comfortable with is, but we can make it work.
I sincerely hope that it will be, uh, definitely not less than scenario two. And something between scenario two and three, if you like to develop scenario two to help, that will be okay too. But I, if, if we do less than scenario two, we'll be at capacity, you know, in a heartbeat. So you have to be really careful.
Well, you, well, you do know, understand when Courtney come to us, if we go to a hundred million dollars.
I watched the video, Mr.
What, what's gonna happen if you have an emergency at your school, you have no borrowing capacity? What's gonna happen?
I'm not saying we should go to scenario three. So that's the scenario three when we had the whole hundred million. So I'm saying something between eighty and hundred, that we will have a little more capacity, but not all the way using the hundred million. That's what I'm suggesting.
As, as long as I've been on this board, I am a big supporter of Christiansburg High School. Everybody has waited, Christiansburg has waited. It's their turn. I agree with that. But we also gotta look at the future too, because I'm gonna tell you upfront, I am not for no tax increase. I will not vote for one.
My worry is tax increase.
So we ha, we have to look at the schools' borrowing power and the counties'.
Well, we don't have borrowing power.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about on your side of the county. I know you can't borrow money, but we can borrow it for you.
My worry will be.
There's two sections.
My worry will be building that school too small.
Yes.
We have to really be careful about that too. I mean, I know what you're saying. I know, you know, what we can do. That's why actually I'm all pushing the state so that they can help us build schools. Uh, because I know if you don't touch the tax, you don't touch the debt ceiling, how are we gonna do all those buildings, maintain and build from year to year? You know, we have these discussions many times, we all know that. I know we, we have the means, you know, uh, limit to our means, but then again, you know, buildings are getting old, prices are getting increasing, and area is getting bigger and bigger. So we gotta somehow sit together and figure out how we can do this so we don't have to, God forbid, deal with a roof collapse that we have to raise the taxes. That's, that's what I'm coming from.
I would like us to consider the, the largest option because Courtney did say, not this last time, because we didn't ask him the question, he did say, if there was an emergency, we can go over the 12%. It's temporary. It, it wouldn't necessarily change our bond rating. So if we did have an emergency, we would, we would be able to do that. But, um, I also have a lot of confidence in this county that, uh, our growth is more than the 2% that's baked into Courtney's estimate, that we're gonna have more borrowing capacity before 2035 than we think. So I, I personally think that we're gonna be okay. And the interest rates are not gonna get lower, so if we're gonna buy, I mean, if we're gonna issue debt, issue debt and let's move forward with this plan.
Yep, so I'm gonna say this again, and it's not to be ugly, it's the fact. Blacksburg was an emergency, Auburn was necessary, but not an emergency. And that increase was to also do Auburn High School and Auburn Middle School. So in Christiansburg, if it's gonna take a couple of pennies to be able to get what we need and then still be able to deal with the other projects that are needed in this school system, we can't keep kicking it down the road. When there's a tax increase, my taxes go up too, and everybody I know, their taxes go up too. But I know, as Mary said, it's an investment in this county. And if we're not investing in the schools, what's the point? What's the point?
I don't think we have to raise the taxes in order to do what we need to do for this school right now. We can entertaining raising taxes later on if it's necessary. It's not necessary. We have the borrowing capacity, we have to structure it. I mean, we are in 2021, we can do the math, and we know from Courtney in past conversations that, gosh, if there's an emergency, we, we are able to, to deal with the emergency. Taxes don't even need to be on the table at this point, as far as my interpretation, but maybe I'm wrong, but that's, that's how I'm reading the dollars instead.
I guess I'll, I'll reiterate, Sarah, that, that projects that are still hanging out there in the future are projects that we should have done several years ago.
I agree, but the, but the county continues to grow, there's gonna, as the county grows, we'll have more and more capacity.
No, I realize that, but we've, I guess what I'm saying is we've, we've already kicked that can.
And we can pull them forward.
I, I guess I don't see that. I, I don't see that.
It's exactly what we did with athletic fields. We pulled those forward.
If, if we have a plan for that, I could support it, but from what I'm seeing right now, there, there comes a point, it, from looking at the numbers, it, there, it seems like there comes a point where if you borrow above a certain level, you're paying a premium for it. And so you're, you're really mortgaging your future, I think.
Yeah, we're, we're not.
And that's, that's to me what scenario three looks like. And so that's why I'm saying I would support scenario two, and I would certainly support something above scenario two, some kind of a compromise.
Scenario three is not borrowing a hundred million. And that was our scenario three.
It's borrowing 96.7 though.
Right. I mean, it's basically there, but it's possible. It's possible. Without raising taxes.
I think we're, we're, um, speculating on something that requires a lot more planning. Um, and so we've got very talented staff that can assist with us planning, um, for the future needs, but for the purposes of tonight's meeting.
Five million dollars.
The five million dollars, I think that's the, the most important decision that we can make tonight so we can move everybody forward.
That's right.
Did you say that's a decision that you guys could, was on the table for tomorrow? Is that what you said?
It'll be, if, if the, if the chair and vice chair agree an agenda review to add it, which I'm, I'm seeing ahead, so yes, it'll be on the agenda for Monday night.
So it's something that we can vote on, on Monday night and have a decision to you? Is that what you're saying, Craig? We can vote on Monday night and you guys will know Monday night.
So is that okay, Tommy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are you guys okay with that, on that end? You okay with that?
Okay.
That's good.
All right. Okay? Good discussion. Lots of good questions. Um, are we ready to move to the next agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, April. Thank you.
Can I, I'm sorry. I, I, I do wanna come in, Tommy as well, I have the Davenport presentation right here. Tommy was at our meeting, as Dr. Meyer was at several, I believe, we were there last Tuesday, uh, Tommy was there again last night. Tommy has a good grasp on the numbers, so appreciate your work on that, Tommy.
Yeah.
So welcome.
And, and your work with the county has just been amazing. It has really made a big difference for MCP.
Thank you to the county for it.
I realize that, but.
Thank you. We work well together.
That work is, has been great. Um, so the next item on our agenda is the legislate, legislative priorities for the Board of Supervisors. Would anyone like to start the discussion surrounding this topic?
I'd be glad to start.
Okay.
I decided to bring the school voucher or tax credit issue to the board because of the concerns of citizens. Many citizens have cited several concerns they have about what is being taught or otherwise being pushed on their children. They feel their voices are not being heard by the school board or the Department of Education. Many of them would find other options to educate their children but cannot afford the cost. Talk of school vouchers is certainly not new and comes up from time to time. I would like to see the General Assembly have this debate. Many on the school board are outraged at this suggestion without even knowing if, how, or when it would occur. There could be an option where the schools would not lose any financial support, but we don't know until it's discussed. Virginia law states that a parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of a parent's child. One of the decisions that was made by this school board is to put male and female children into a situation where they would be using the same restroom. This one decision has upset citizens more than others. You are telling them to forget the rule that they have been following all their lives. What will they be exposed to? And what about their safety? Well, unfortunately, in Loudoun County, it has been answered. A female student was sexually assaulted by a male student who identified as a female. When the father brought this before their school board, he was told by one member that his daughter wasn't believed. The male student was sent to another school where he sexually assaulted another female student. The conversation to provide options for all parents is one worth having, especially if it leads to a compromise. A compromise that the parents can accept and leave their children in public schools. Another argument I have heard from several speakers is how bad our private schools are. Comments like no accountability or they can discriminate are inappropriate. These small Christian schools would not survive if these accusations were true. The worst accusation was that they are only in it for the money. If you think our schools need more money, you need to see how they get by on much less. But the most despicable comments were accusing members of the Board of Supervisors of being transphobic and promoting racism and not supporting public schools. I have never heard from any citizen that they wanted to take their children out of public schools to keep them away from anyone. It's the policies that will drive them away. That's all I gotta say.
Okay, so I'm the biggest one that's outraged, and even your statements tonight are outrageous. Um, as far as things being pushed on students, how about right now that the way history is told, is taught in public schools is pushing lies on students, mistruths as to how slavery actually happened and that there were good things about slavery? Uh, don't think so. Um, and that the contributions from anyone other than white folks, for the biggest part, is the only thing that's pushed on students? And you may not have heard anybody say that they're pulling their kids out of schools because of other students or this or that, it's the policies. It's the same thing, that's what integration was. It was a law. It's a law. But yet people fled because others were coming in, and those were words that were used by you. That these others, these are human beings. In fact, these are students, these are children who are being talked about in this manner. Um, I remember when I was in elementary school, that the restroom that was in the classroom, the boys and the girls both used them. And I'm not sure what was going on with the student in Loudoun County, but it sounded like something much more deeper, much deeper than the issue of trans. You know, parents and students have options as to what their student would be able to do if they were put into a situation they were uncomfortable with, but nobody wants to hear that either. So when, when you talk about, and others talk about vouchers and folks being able to make decisions about their students, I absolutely agree. Make those decisions, but don't do it at the expense of public education, because that's what everybody else depends on. So.
And don't do it based on incorrect facts. First of all, I, I'd like to just, I don't have what our students read earlier today, uh, but the, I did take some notes when they're reading their opening statement. Um, committed to diversity and inclusion. All students can learn in a safe place. Every person deserves to be loved and respected. Diversity is our strength. Equitable access. Every child deserves an advocate. You're basically saying, no, only the children, so any child who doesn't fall in what you consider to be normal, which is the word you used in the last meeting, they don't deserve these things. Only who you consider to be normal. And that is so wrong. Don't, I, I'm not done. That Loudoun County case, if you look up that Loudoun County case, that student had, was, had already been arrested, he had an ankle bracelet on, he shouldn't even been in the school. That's a whole nother issue. And they're not even 100% sure this had anything to do with being bisexual or transgender. He was somebody who was already accused of rape. He shouldn't have been there. You can't compare that to a student in Montgomery County who chooses to be either non-binary or non-gender conforming, and they want to use a, a different bathroom. You can't compare a student who's been arrested for rape to those, the students in our schools. We would never allow a student like that with that kind of a history to be in our classrooms. I mean, yet, we are supposed to be an open and accepting community. And what you're saying is that people should be able, and you just, and you actually, I can't believe you even said it tonight, you admitted that the reason that people wanna pull their kids out of school is they don't wanna use their kid in a school where maybe male and female or transgender student might be used in the bathroom. That's why. It has nothing to do with academics. Aren't, we have great schools. Our students get a great education here. And you know what? If people wanna pull their kids, when I was walking in tonight, people, somebody yelled at me, Miss Cass, please vote to let us have our choice. And I said, you have a choice. Go ahead, make a choice, choose. You can, you are welcome to take your child out of the school and send them to another school. You have a choice. I have a choice if I wanna do that. I did choose that. When I lived in New Jersey, I chose to take my child out of public school and put her in a private school. I made that choice. I paid for it. I wasn't rich, but it was the right thing to do for my kid at the time. You know what? You make choices, we figure out how to make things work, and these parents have a choice. And boy, to, to make that choice, just because you don't want your kid to interact with other kids? What are we teaching? What kind of lesson are our students learning? When we allow them to just, I don't wanna go to school because I don't wanna be with that person, I don't like them, they're different than me. What lesson, what life lesson are we teaching them? We're teaching them to be elitist? We're teaching them to be disrespectful and not accept other people and their differences? How is our society gonna survive if we keep allowing people to not accept people for their differences?
Do you know transgender students have a 98% suicide rate? If they have a support system in the community and with their parents, that drops to 30% or less. So our students currently in Montgomery County have been told they don't have a support system from certain people. That's not acceptable for any child, any child.
Can I ask a question on y'all's policy? If, if a kid comes into school and says, whatever, if a boy wants to go in the girl's bathroom and that's the way they feel, is it your policy not to contact their parent?
That is not true. Annie, could you speak to that, please? That is misinformation.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. Um, no, that is not correct. The parent is notified, um, and so what happens is the parent is notified and they are brought together, the family, to have a meeting and to talk about what the accommodations are that that family may need, but it is absolutely with the parent.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And I got some other things I need to say while we're talking about this. Just of course, I'm a supporter of tax credit or voucher. It was also said that I don't support public schools. I usually don't talk about what I did, because number one, the Board of Supervisors, you had to have four votes. But I'm gonna run through a few things. When I got elected, I met with some teachers that teach Title I, special reading for kids that need help. I met with a group of them. We sat there and talked for probably two hours or so. Number one thing is, they told me, you're the only elected official that's asked to meet with us. Number two is, that year, the Board of Supervisors, with the votes, give them more money for Title I reading. Last year, they bought the chocolate books. As I looked at Craig and I seen that, I said, chocolate for that much?
Title I is federally funded, I believe.
No. We give money that year.
Not to Title I, it's federally funded.
Whatever you wanna say, I'm not gonna argue with you. School buses, I'm an advocate for school buses, always have been. I told Dr. Myers, we don't need school buses out here on the street with over 100,000 miles with kids and bus drivers on them breaking down. Number three, when you talked about giving the school employees a $2,000 budget, Dr. Myers was at our meeting, and I looked at him and I said, I'm trying to get your employees $2,000. Did I not say that? So I do support public schools. Number four, at our Board of Supervisors meeting, the last one, Matthew come in, he used to be the president over Montgomery County Public, uh, Education Association. He thanked me and Ms. Biggs for our support. He knows I'm a supporter of public schools. Number five, pay raises. You have to admit, I'm all about pay raises for employees, county and school employees. I've always said, you can have a billion dollar bill, but if you don't take care of your employees, you have nothing. When we, when we give county employees the, whatever you wanna call it, the little bonus or whatever, then the COVID hit. I think the school needed $3.4 million for a 3% raise, or a bonus for their employees. All right, we had to put that on layaway for a little while. All right, when we got our finances to order and all, we give the money back to the school, we give our employees their raise, all right? We come back and give the 1.7%, the 1.7 million dollars of the 3.4 million dollars for the 3% raise. Mr. Krantz was at our meeting, and we turned over the other 1.7 million dollars for the raise. Pulled up on video, if you don't believe me. I asked Mr. Krantz, I said, is the employees gonna get the rest of their raise, 1.7? He said, I don't know, it hadn't been discussed. I would like to know if they did get that or not.
You're talking about did the employees get the full 1% raise, is that right?
It, it was gonna take 3.4 million dollars to give them 3% raise.
Right.
And we had to split it up.
The employees got their 3% raise.
But did it go back to July like the county employees did?
No. No.
But they got their full 3% raise. Started in January.
Right. Not to July 1.
But that 1.7, that last 1.7 was supposed to get back.
Well, the 1.7 was an annual number, because we had 3.4 sitting in the budget.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Well, I wanna talk about it from the standpoint of money. Everyone here, I believe, agrees that the state has underfunded education. Okay? I would think everyone here would agree to that. So you, it's, it's like third grade. Picture a blackboard, and you have a negative pot of money from the state for education. And then you're gonna minus, you're gonna put that minus, that subtraction sign in there, and you're gonna minus out more state money for vouchers or tax credits. And then put your equal sign. What's gonna happen? You're gonna have less money than you started out with in the first place, which was already negative. All right, now, having that in mind, think about the school boards. They're gonna get less money from the state, where are they gonna come to make it up? The Board of Supervisors. So you gotta look at the overall picture. Another problem is that, and I tried to bring this up, and I don't think I did a really good job at that meeting, but if you're gonna just take, so let's say select students want to go, and they want to go to another school, private school, whatever, it's not gonna change your overall operational cost for, for what you're doing within the schools, for the number of people that you have to have in the schools, teachers, programs, bus drivers, cafeteria workers. It's not gonna decrease your overall expenses, but yet, you're gonna get less money from the state coming in. So to me, it's a sort of a simple financial picture. Um, and, and I've always been an advocate for more state funding for education, as Ms. Karan mentioned earlier. I have pushed, and you guys know that, I mean, all the time, push, push, push. And so personally, I would hate to see us asking the General Assembly over and over again, hey, we need more money, and then turn right around and say, but on the other hand, we support vouchers, we support tax credits. What are we really saying? What are we saying to our members of the General Assembly? So I'm sort of thinking of it in financial terms, not even getting into the arguments of anything else. It's the financial implications that really I'm passionate about, and you guys know that. So that's what my argument would be there. Very simple equation. You start out with less money, you minus out more money, you're gonna have a heck of a lot less money after that equal signs. That's all I have to say right now.
I hear, uh, Mr. Fidziskowski, I, I hear what you're saying about, you know, what's, what's wrong with just having a conversation about something like this, right? But I, I think it's, it's hard to figure out how, I mean, I think we've seen this tried in other places in other states, and I don't know that anybody solved the problem about where to, where to get this money from. I think it's pretty, I, I think when you look at implementing something like this, it's pretty clear where the money's going to eventually come from, whether it comes directly from there or indirectly. And I think that's why you see that reaction from, from, from people, because it, it feels like it is an, you know, an assault on public education, because it has been in every other place that it's been tried. I mean, you can have maybe a different source of tax revenue or something like that, but I, I don't see how that doesn't still take away from, from, you know, from your base of, of, of revenue. So I think that's, that sounds okay to say, but I, I think I'm just explaining. That sounds okay to say, but I, I think I'm just explaining why I think, you know, why I feel, and I think many other people feel that way about, you know, about having that as a legislative priority for the, for the Board of Supervisors. And then I think on, you know, the way, well, going to the transgender issue, I mean, first of all, I mean, I, happened to personally, I, I understand how this is a difficult issue. I mean, it was something that was new to me, you know, within my adult lifetime, when I had a friend who had a child who, you know, identified as non-binary and had to refer to them as "they," and it was kind of a difficult thing to, to wrap my head around, and, and I understand that, but that doesn't make people who are, just because I don't understand it, or other people don't understand, it doesn't, well, doesn't mean that there's anything, you know, wrong with that person or that child, and I think, you know, to say male and female in the same, we don't allow male and female in the same bathroom. We, we allow males in the male bathroom, males in the female bathroom. And if you're a transgender male, you're male. If you're transgender female, you're female. That's, that's the way that it is. And I think to say otherwise is, is to kind of obscure things, just like, you know, talking about the, you know, the rape thing. I remember years ago, when, when, you know, i- issue of, of, you know, homosexuality was a bigger thing in the news and that kind of a thing. You know, it was kind of the same thing that was said, like, bringing, bringing these things together that, that really have nothing to do with each other. But I think on the, and I do agree, Mr. King, that in general, I think you guys have been very supportive, and I think that's, you know, some of the backlash maybe that you're feeling from some of us on some of these legislative priorities is, in some ways, because it's kind of a surprise, you know, it seem, it feels like, you know, the things that we're advocating for and the things that we're doing, you guys have been generally supportive, and then all, all of a sudden, it just feels like, you know, we're met with like, resistance in the exact opposite direction. As far as, you know, I, I understand how the, the accusation of, of racism can sting, right? I'm, even though I'm Middle Eastern, I, you know, I think most people lump me in as, as white, and that's, I guess, probably the, the way that it's been most of my life, so for all intents and purposes, I guess I'll go along with it for a second here for, and just say that it's, as a, as a white person, you don't wanna, you don't want the accusation of, "Hey, I'm racist." You're not trying to be racist, you don't wanna be racist, right? But, I mean, one of the things that I've learned over the last couple of years, especially last year, without everything that happened, is, is when you start to look at the history and you start to learn more, you know, and, 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 and look at things, you start to realize that maybe I'm not racist in a direct way, but maybe, maybe there's things that I do and things that I, you know, attitudes that I have that are, that are rooted in some, in some bias, or, or heaven forbid, some racism or something like that, and so, so I have personally had to kind of go back and, and, and reexamine a lot about myself and my life and that type of thing, but anyway, I guess the point being, it's, it's not enough just to say, "Well, I'm not racist, therefore I'm not." I mean, we can still all contribute to, to bias and, and that kind of a thing, and I, I think what really bothered me, and I'm sure bothered other people, about the, the way this discussion happened, was, you know, bringing up this whole thing about CRT, and then, you know, it's that juxtaposition of having that conversation and then turning around and, and, and putting, you know, the vouchers on, you know, on your legislative priority, because there's echoes there, and if, and it's not, you know, I went to, I went to a private Christian school when I was in middle school, so I, I understand, that wasn't obviously my choice, but my parents, but you know, I wasn't aware of this until more recently, but there are definitely racial overtones with a lot of that stuff that happened, and, and when you look at history and you see, when did those Christian schools really take off and become kind of a big thing? And it was in the 60s, you know, it was kind of in a response to the civil rights movement, and, and, and so that's just, I'm just trying to paint to you guys why, why there's been kind of the reaction that there has been, and and I, and I hope, you know, one thing I will say is, you know, having been kind of on both sides and grown up maybe a little bit differently politically than I am now, I mean, if, if, if you guys have questions about any of this stuff, I think it could also be beneficial to have some, some one-on-one conversations about this stuff, too. And if you think that it would be, my door's always open, please feel, feel free to, to reach out to me, and I'll try to, you know, help bridge that gap, but I, I do think that it's important that, that we do, it's okay to have differences, but I think it's okay, it'd be nice to move forward in the same direction as much as possible with you all.
I think what bothered me most on this, obviously, I'm against taking money from public education. Like Ms. Biggs said, the path is already very slim. So any money that goes out, that means we're gonna come to you ask, probably. There's no other, other way. But I think that what bothered me most, when you mentioned that, you know, we all hear from our constituents, but when I get, when I get questions, you know, Board of Supervisors related, you know, tax-related, you know, what is the tax rate, how we can increase the tax, not increase the tax. I would like to, you know, pass that to you guys and to your board and send them to you. You get your expertise and what you think about it, so you can, you know, tell them what it is or what it is not, because it's not maybe my expertise to talk about it. So I was expecting, because you heard from your citizens, I mean, we do hear, you know, from them too, constituents, you know, when you, when they talk about you, that the schools are doing A, B, C, D all wrong, you know, I would have liked that we would have come together and talked about it, or you could have reached out to Dr. Meyer and say like, "Hey, you know, are you really doing this, this, and this in your schools?" Like Mr. King just asked, you know, are you letting the, you know, not letting the parents know about this? And then we can straighten up, you know, one of us will say, "No, actually, this is happening, but this is misinformation." So, you know, not having that conversation and knowing that our joint meeting is corner, so having something put on the, put on your priorities list was really, really shocker. And the other thing is, was the timing. We are trying to work together, we're trying to get the CHS going. You know, we're trying to get renovation under the way, and, and we've been dealing, you've been, and the school system been dealing through COVID past, you know, almost two years now. So many issues, you know, masks, vaccine, what is right, what is wrong, you can open the school, you can close a school. You know, we were under so much stress, so dealing with something like that to turn, you know, pretty much, you know, get all our hairs up, you know, this is just a really unnecessary stress for everyone and a bad timing. And again, it's a really wrong thing, because, you know, the public, private schools could be good, and, you know, like Ms. Cass said, we all have choices. And, you know, giving poor people a choice with the tax credits and vouchers is not definitely the solution, because, you know, those pub, private schools, not necessarily all of them pri, provides transportation, which we do, you know, our kids ride on buses, free. And some of them that in the past I know they don't necessarily have free lunch, which we've been providing free. So there are a lot of other aspects that, you know, when you make a choice, yeah, you deal with it, and we have a choice, and the other choice, like the young man said to you guys the other night, that, yeah, you can change your board members, you can change your Board of Supervisor, you can change your governor, or, you know, lieutenant governor, so we have an election ability as a citizen, so that's part of a choice we have as well, but while we are really struggling at the ends meet, taking more money is punishing all the others that are gonna stay in the public schools, have to stay in the public schools, and also 90% of the nation's kids in public schools. So there's a lot of, lot of kids. Not a good solution.
I'd like to address, because I did show support for the school vouchers, and I wanna explain why I'm in support of that. And I think it's great that we do have this open communication. I am very supportive of the schools. My children graduated from Christiansburg High School, and through the many years, I've volunteered and advocated for many things in the school. And I've been very active as a citizen, and then as an elected official, I've supported things for the school. So saying that I don't support public education, I don't think is fair. However, I do believe that parents have a choice, and I think that all, everyone probably agrees here that everyone has a choice. The question is, if by allowing the voucher, you're thinking it, it's hurting the school system. I want to invest in the child, not a building, but the child. And I think the parent is the best person to make that choice. And just as we stated, first of all, I praise the school system and give open praise lots of times. You all have been, done an amazing job through the COVID. And if anything, COVID has taught us that we need to pivot, think outside the box, and options are good. And I feel options are good. Public school offers transportation, meals, resources, services for students with disabilities. Those are all great things. Sports, we talked about how sports keep kids in school. Those are all wonderful things. Okay? So you need to ask yourself, when I have citizens, I'm not on the board of, of, school board, when I have citizens call and complain and, and voice their concerns, why would you leave a public school where all of this is free? If you had, is affordability, would you go somewhere else? And when we're talking about a voucher, this, I, this to present, we have no idea what that amount would be. What, what, could it, does it take money away from the schools? We're not sure of that. I wanna give parents the choice. The reasons that I've been contacted and set, and reasons why people want to support this school voucher is because of overcrowding. Now, someone has said, "Well, even if we lose a handful of students here and a handful of students there, we'll still have those same operational costs." Well, then you need to reevaluate your operationals things, because when you have overcrowding for 25 to 30 kids in a, in a teacher's classroom, that they're overwhelmed and stressed out, that's not good for anybody else, versus if that person, that family decided that a private school, which would be a smaller class size, would be better for that student. You think about issues of transparency and trust. Parents have lost trust in the school system. And I hate to hear that, because I praise, and my kids, I did everything to support the school, but they've lost transparency. Can I discount those citizens with their concerns? I, I hear both sides, pros and cons. And I'm, I, I love that people are engaged, that's what we're here to do. They, people have a voice, they need to use it. But when I hear the reasons of transparency issues, and this is the school board, if you watch any school board, and I've attended some, and I watch as many as I can, there are issues about transparency. Transparency between the board, administration, parents, teachers, communication is big. There's a trust issue. Behavioral issues. COVID has caused great stress, and as we've already talked about, suicide rates being up, behavioral issues being up. Maybe for a student, a private school, a home schooled, or whatever would be best for that family. That is the parent's decision. What is best for that family, for that student. We have problems with people not being compliant. I heard from the school board that there are policies that have not been enforced, and now I'm getting, now I'm getting letters and emails where people saying, "Why is this being enforced now?" And my understanding from listening to the school board, these are policies that have been enacted many years ago, but they have been lax. Bullying issues. I heard, I attended a school board meeting where a student said they had been bullied, they know people that have physically been harmed, said that it had brought, been brought to the attention of teachers and administration, and they felt that nothing had been done. That's a safety issue. Every child needs an advocate. I completely 100% agree with that. Every child needs to be respected. I completely agree with that. These are the issues, and these are why these parents have concerns. That's why I support school vouchers and school choice.
First of all, Ms. Blevins, the bullying issues, that was brought up by a transgender child. That's who brought that up. That was not brought up by another student in the school. So basically, a transgender student said that they were being bullied by other students in the school. I just wanna make sure that, that you're clear on that.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Also, that you're saying because of overcrowding, they might wanna pull their children out. Well, I'd like to say that maybe we wouldn't be overcrowded if we could get more funding from our Board of Supervisors. Because the, all of the issues that you just talked about are all based upon the fact that we don't have enough staff in our schools, and we don't have enough to be able to accommodate the children in our county. So you, as the Board of Supervisors, have assisted in putting us in this position. The overcrowding in a classroom, the bullying issues, behavioral issues, we are trying now to deal, every school in this country is dealing with this. Our universities are dealing with this. Shoot, we're dealing with this in just the adult population. People have forgotten how to behave. And as far as saying the transparency, I'm one of the first people to say that, but I will say one thing, that I think we're more transparent than ever, because we do sit here, and yeah, we fight with each other, and we argue with each other, but we're actually having these conversations, and we're doing it in front of everybody. And we're, we're, we're letting parents know that, hey, we all have issues with each other and with what's going on, but we talk about it, and we bring it up, and we make sure that the community, the community knows more now about what's going on in our schools than they ever did before. So anybody who says that transparent, they wanna use that term, that's just a cop-out. So you know what? If they're on floor, they think the schools are too crowded, that they, there's no transparency, that their child's being bullied, and that there's behavior issues, then they are very welcome to choose to send their child to a private school. There is nothing stopping anybody in this county. The whole idea of vouchers came up to help low-income children get into fa, get into schools that weren't failing schools. We don't have failing schools in Montgomery County. We have great schools. Parents don't need a tax credit to send their kid to a school where they're gonna get a better education. So I'm gonna just, that's basically refuting what you, most of what you said. And, you know, you wanting to invest in the child, well, and your parents are the best to do that? Yeah, they are. You're right. Then they are welcome to make another choice, like I did in my life when I needed to for a particular reason. And when everybody says they're so supportive of public schools, I, I, yes, you, you've done, you've, you've provided us, but we need more. It's not enough. We're doing everything we possibly can to stretch the dollar, and we can't do much more. So, that's
What about policy? Enforcing policy?
Enforcing which policy? Is that the one about what's posted in classrooms? I'll be honest, I don't necessarily, is that the policy we're talking about?
One of them, yes.
I believe that's what Ms.
And also
brought up at the last meeting.
Yes.
All right. Because our, because the world has changed, and policy, that we don't relook at every single policy, I think it's a policy we need to relook at, how we actually manage that. What is really considered political and not political, I don't think we necessarily agreed on that at the last meeting. We've talked about it and came to some conclusions, but I, I, do I feel like there is a rampant disrespect for policy? No, I don't. I think that is something that's come up as, as our world has changed over the last 15, 20 years. Like it's changing everywhere. I think that pretty much accounts for everything you mentioned.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I wanted to say a few things. Of course, I lose my train of thought when I speak. I'm very bad at it. I think I'm a very loyal supporter of the school system, and I have for a long time, and I think the proof of that is, I'm sitting here in this chair tonight, or one of the ways I prove it. And I, and I look at these vouchers, I know several people that pulled their kids out of schools, out of Montgomery County schools in the past, for very different reasons. And none of those reasons are any of my business. However, I look at it this way, if I was, if I were driving a 2003 Chevrolet and I wanted to trade cars, and after I traded, I still had to make a payment on the old one, I wouldn't wanna do that. So if, if a parent wants to pull their kids out of this school So if, if a parent wants to pull their kids out of this school and still pay taxes to keep it here, and then pay somewhere else too, I just don't think that's a good way, I wouldn't want to do that. When I was raising a child, I, taking her out of the public schools was never crossed my mind. So I, I have a hard time even recognizing why somebody would want to do that. But we do live in a free society, so I think they ought to have that option and have the pay that goes, or the, the tax money back that goes along with that.
What about other services then? So can I pick and choose what I want my taxes to pay for? So may, what if I hired a private security guard to watch my house 24/7? Can I end now, pay less tax because I don't need police officers to watch out for me? And I don't think we can use the logic of, of, well, if a parent doesn't want their child to go to school, what, what about people then? What if elderly couple moves to Montgomery County? Should they not pay taxes because they're never going to send a child to public school? I mean, that, that just, there's no logic. I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand it costs a lot of money to send your kid to private school. It's not an easy thing to do. Um, you can homeschool, that's another option, um, which isn't, still isn't free. Uh, but, you know, you, it's definitely cheaper than sending to a private school. But I, I think that how, how can we, as far as I understand, you can't pick and choose what you pay taxes for. We pay taxes, and with that, you get a variety of services, some of which you use all the time, and some of which you may never use at all. I don't take the bus system, my taxes pay for transportation. If I don't drive a car, should I not pay taxes because I don't need to take care of the road? I don't ever drive. And, because I could go on and on.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, it's, I'd most definitely support parental choice. It's, I made that clear in our last meeting, and I've got to speak with some of you about vouchers and how I feel about them. And I think parents should be known, you can, about what's happening with their students. We've had conversations about parents, um, understanding and knowing what's going on with their child in the schools, and I'm very, very much supporter in that. I think we should. Parents deserve the right to know what's happening to their child. Talking about transparency, I do, I have to say, I get tired of hearing that. I have heard that for years, and I agree. We do everything we can do. I do not like meetings streamed, just because of the, if you look, they're all, somebody's watching. But if that's what it takes for people to see what's happening, and they do, and it's, we have great Christian private schools in our area. We sure do. And I don't have any fault against them. If that's what parents choose to do with their students, more power to them. I think it's great. But one of the things that concerns me is they don't have, and everybody knows, this is something I ran 16 years on, was extracurricular activities. We hear once a month, students come and talk about what happened that made their senior year or their high school experience so important. And usually, it's not, no disrespect to any teacher, but usually it's not, I love my English class or I love my math class. It's a love, sorry, I don't mean anybody, don't let anybody hatchet me. But it's usually about, I love that state championship. I loved winning that whatever, uh, education bowl. Whatever it is that they went to, or the, the, something that happened special in their school. It's about the extracurricular activities, the music, the choir, the band, sports, clubs, feeling a part, feeling a need in that area. And plus, being a career in technical education kind of gal, that concerns me too. Because right now, you can't find people to do labor. So if we don't have public schools which have a huge career in technical education, like Montgomery County does now, I can't speak for what's happening in other parts of the state. Maybe they do need other different types of schools. But for Montgomery County, we got some dag on good ones. Yeah, are they perfect? No, they're not. But you educate 200 or 300 kids compared to 10,000, you're going to have a little bullying. You're going to have a few fights. And the more children that go to private education, they're going to see those same things. You know, when they start having 500 or 600 students, they're going to see a little bullying. They're, I see it in the workplace. I mean, we as adults do it. It doesn't happen just in schools. We have cameras on our buses. We have aides at recess. We have aides at lunches. I mean, we do everything we know how to do to keep children safe. And I, I don't know, but as far as career and technical education, we do fif, is it fif? We have 15 different programs for career and technical education. We offer 90, 90 different courses in our high schools. That's amazing. That is amazing what we can do here in Montgomery County. And I think sometimes, a lot of our, especially parents that have children that have graduated, grandparents, and this is something that I said at the last meeting, sometimes we, those people aren't familiar with what's really happening, the positive things that are happening in our schools. And that's our job, to educate those families, to say, you know, I know there's some negative stuff. I know you might not agree with this, this kind of stuff. But 95% of what's happening in our schools is good. And we got to start seeing that. We got to start seeing what, what good is happening in our county. And, you know, all, all of those things, yeah, you know, we, we don't all agree. Like Sue said, we don't all agree on the board. We fight like cats and dogs. I mean, and sometimes I go home madder than a hornet. I mean, I truly do. But she, and, and I'm going to use you, Sue, yours is right to your opinion, and I am mine. And, you know, so with that being said, that's, that's my concerns with, with vouchers. I, I support parental choice in everything. And I have, like I said, you can watch the last few meetings, I have spoke out on that, and I believe it truly. But I do think here in Montgomery County, we have good, good schools, and we offer a good education. And we do great things for our students, even though we've got a few things that, that come to the surface sometime that we, we think differently on. And I've always said, that's where parents need to get involved. They need to be at the meetings. They need to go to their schools. I can tell you stories on top of stories of things that I've heard about parents bringing projects to the office, and somebody saying, well, would you accept it that way? I don't care. I mean, we've got grandparents raising children. We've got all kinds of different scenarios and situations. If you really want to get down to the nitty-gritty, you know, that's where it's parents' job to get involved with their children's education and make it their.
Anybody else?
So just to address Ms. Karan's point of you being kind of shocked and disappointed of disappearing, I was also shocked and disappointed. Uh, this was snuck onto our legislative priorities with no warning, no phone calls, no discussion. This, this is a very partisan and very divisive issue. Um, and the way that it went down in that meeting was appalling. To use a 10-year-old child as an example for why that should, why, why we should be supporting school vouchers was appalling. Um, there's no, I'm not going to deliver a big flowery speech because I don't have one. There's no way I'll ever vote for our legislative priorities with this on it. Further, I will advocate loudly to the General Assembly. If anything like this gets discussed, I'll be in Richmond.
I'd like to, I'd like to, um, speak to Supervisor Demott's approach at our meeting. All she asked was for this not to be on our legislative agendas. We didn't need to have it there. Supervisor Fitchakowski wants the General Assembly to debate this. There is, I, I, you know, I'm a engineer. I do spreadsheets. I compare and contrast. I ask for data, nonpartisan data. No data says that academics are better when vouchers happen. Why would we want to support something that academics would not be improved? It says that, it says that parents appreciate the choice. It doesn't say the students actually appreciated the choice. That's one thing. But let me step back again. Whether you convey that this was snuck onto our legislative priority, I, I don't necessarily agree with that. Because we all had the right to put something on the agenda, and we were, we all know that we're going to debate if we think it's important, and we will. Supervisor Fitchakowski apologized fantastically, I think, at the, our last meeting about how, what he said at that meeting, at the initial meeting, he could understand or didn't mean to hurt people's feelings. And I truly believe that. You know, I've, I've never felt like Supervisor Fitchakowski would say something intentionally to hurt somebody's feelings. But that gets me to results, outcomes. Why would we ever do anything unless we're going to be in a better situation? History has shown us, outcomes from vouchers produce racism, okay? I'm not here to debate the whole thing. I mean, that's just a fact. It segregates people. Private schools allow, um, the private schools are allowed to choose who goes to their school. Therefore, they can say yes to this person and no to that person. I don't, I don't, I don't think public money should go to organizations that have the choice to choose. Um, so debate at the state level? Why the heck are we going to want our General Assembly to waste their time to debate this subject when they did it almost 10 years ago? They already decided this wasn't good for our state. Is there any new data that says, oh, we're in a new situation, we should debate this again? No. If anything, there's more and more reports that say this doesn't help. What I did say at the first meeting is, I'm going to go figure out what could make things better, right? Economic, Economic Policy Institute is a nonpartisan organization. It says, "The push of vouchers could be seen as distracting from implementing programs that can, in fact, improve student learning. There are many other policy changes that are likely to have much higher payoffs than privatization. Investing more in excellent teacher, pre-service training, in early childhood education, in after-school and summer programs, in improved student health and nutrition programs in and out of schools, and in implementing high standards in math, reading, and science curriculum, all yield higher returns than the very small, if any, gains that have been estimated for voucher students." North Carolina is now expecting to pay approximately $144 million per year in the years 2027, 2028. Where does that, does that money just show up? Supervisor Blevins, you said reduce operational costs? How? Mr. Kranz over there, that's his job. He's already doing that. Do you think that there's some remarkable hidden operational cost that he hasn't explored yet? I don't think so. What do you think, Mr. Kranz? Is there something out there that you haven't just turned a rock over? Thank you.
Ms. Mon, what I'm talking about is if there are less people to serve, aren't the costs going to go down?
How?
You have less people to serve.
Okay, tell me the costs that you're specifically talking about.
Well, if you have, let's say, first of all, the voucher would be an option for a parent. So what is the fear of how many students would not, would, would take advantage of that and would leave the school system? Do you say 1,000 students? Is that, that's probably a lot, right?
All right, okay, so let's just talk about the way it is right now. There are hundreds of students in private schools in our county. How many more, if they had vouchers, would go? Another, you know, couple hundred, maybe, right?
Right, so I don't know.
Would Montgomery County public schools have lower operational costs?
If you lost 100 students, 200 students?
Yeah.
Out of 10,000.
Would there be any loss, would there be any less operational cost? You, you specifically said reduce operational cost.
So is that electric, power?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay, so maybe I, maybe I misspoke using operational cost. What I'm saying is, what I'm trying to get the point is, if you did not have that student, you would not be providing those services for that student. Would your cost not come down?
Our revenue would go down because of the average daily?
ADM.
ADM?
Per child.
But what operational costs? A textbook here?
Well, I think, I think, I think what you're both getting at maybe is that, I, I agree with you, Ms. Blevins. Yes, your cost would go down somewhat. But the question is, would it go down? It, it, it's an issue of how much does your revenue go down versus how much your cost goes down, right?
Exactly, and I think the revenue would go down more.
And I think your revenue is going to go down a lot more than your costs are going to go down. And furthermore, if those vouchers are available, to your point, Ms. Bone, that if you, I don't know how many private school kids we have in this county, but let's say we have 1,000, or let's say 500, I don't know. If there's 500 private school kids in the county, and then you increase it by 100 or 500 or whatever, those 500 that are already in private school, they're also going to get that voucher, right? So you're, you're losing that revenue too. So I think that, I, I think it's a net loss for, for public schools. And I think Ms. Cass brings up, brought up a great point that I've never heard anybody who's advocated for, for vouchers. I mean, you know, should I get a security voucher, and a library voucher, and a, you know? That, that's just not the way public service works. That's not the way our society.
All the retired individuals living in the county has to get their taxes back.
I would, I would like to.
They don't have, they don't have, they don't have kids.
I would like to just finish, because I'm almost, I'm closed. Debating at the state level, what we need is a study. And the study, all the facts are already out there. Why does a debate actually have to occur? There is no, I mean, it's like 99 to 1. 99% says vouchers and tax credits don't do anything positive. The only thing that showed up positive for vouchers is the fact that the parents appreciated the choice. No other results, no other outcomes came positive. Zero. And this is from nonpartisan resources.
Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I do. So, you know, it's good to talk about the money. And it's good to talk about why we're going to debate this again. And it all comes back down to people who are not the way you want them to be. Whether it be their color, whether it be their sexual identity, or anything else that's different, and you don't like it. That's what it comes down to. Let's have a debate in the General Assembly because of the transgender policy. That's what it's about. Let's have a debate about a pride flag in a classroom. That's what this is about. Let's have a debate about what's taught in our schools because we're afraid if people understand the truth, and it's very, very difficult to hear about the atrocity of slavery and what that did to people, and what it still does to people. That's what this is about. It ain't about the money. It's about getting away from people who are different and not having to hear the truth. That's what it's about. It's about a teacher having given an assignment and a poster being in a classroom because the student was expressing their feelings about law enforcement, and somebody didn't like it. It's about the gave, uh, the pride flag flying to help support students because that's what I feel as a educator I need to do because I know how the students in my. I feel as a educator I need to do because I know how the students in my classes are suffering because they're being bullied or because they are afraid to be who they are because they will get bullied. That's what this is about. So we can, we can talk about the money because it will devastate. And vouchers didn't start because of something that Sue said. Vouchers started because of integration. You heard that from a couple of our speakers, of your speakers, last week. We've talked about even living in the counties where the school systems shut down because everybody fled because they had vouchers and tax credits to allow them to do that. And what happened with the rest of the students, as one speaker said, they'd never even got high school diplomas because the school system sat down, shut down. Or they were sent away to other states or other communities with family so that they could finish their education. That's what this is about. It's about not wanting to hear the truth and not wanting to be around people who are not as I feel they should be. Those people. That's what this is about. So we can talk about the money all we want, but that's what it's about. And as we read what Montgomery County values are in our school system, it sounds like there are other people in this county who don't believe that and they haven't believed it. But now there's a movement across this country to say, we can treat other people any way we want to. Well, guess what? I'm not going to be treated any way you want to treat me. And there are a whole lot of other people in this county who are standing up and saying, we don't want to be treated any way you want to treat us. We want to be who we are too. So stop talking about the money. Talk about what's real here and how we're going to fix that. And how we fix that is to say to people, we have to make sure that we're respecting everyone and we're giving everyone the opportunity to get a good education. I'm all about parents' choice. If they want to take their kids out of the public schools, please do it. I moved my kids from Montgomery County to another area in the state. It was still public schools because I had issues with what was going on in one of the schools that my kids was, my child was in. But I didn't take them out of public schools. And I surely don't believe that folks truly understand the impact of the money. If you take your child out and there's only your child out of that classroom, we still have to pay the teacher, we still have to heat and cool the room, we still have to provide the bus transportation, we have to provide everything and it still costs the same. We don't get a discount. So let, let's be real here. So if we want to start having conversations about how we move forward through this and how we have a better understanding, it ain't about the money. And I'd be more than willing for us to have that, that conversation. Because what you're hearing from parents is not about the schools, it's about what they don't like or who they don't like in the schools. Or my child hearing something that I don't like, you know? Uh, I keep talking about, uh, South Lake, Texas. Their latest little thing was, uh, we need to teach an alternative to the Holocaust. There's no alternative to that. It was the Holocaust. Millions of people were killed, Jewish people, because they didn't like them. Slavery, same situation, because these people are not who we think measure up to us, so we'll treat them differently. So, yeah. Montgomery County needs to have a deeper conversation about that and people sitting in leadership positions need to stop trying to cover up the truth about what's going on and start having those conversations too. Because that's what it's about.
Anybody else?
All right. Our next item on the agenda is our agenda preparation. Um, the agenda preparation, um, is listed on your agenda. Our next meeting is November 9th in this room. The next item on our agenda is the payment of bills. Do, does anyone wish to make a motion regarding the payment of bills?
So moved second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on our agenda is the personnel report. Does anyone wish to make a motion regarding the personnel report?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm sorry.
I didn't hear the second. I'm so sorry.
I'm, Ms. Bond, I don't-
A second, sorry.
Thank you. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I adjourn this meeting at 10:02. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.